Mr. Shi?
Here.
Ms. Erica?
Here.
Mrs. Ward?
Here.
Mrs. Maroney?
Here.
Mrs. Conway?
Here.
All presidents, Mrs. Pang, Mr. Brescher, Mrs. Patel, and Dr. O'Cham.
They should be coming soon, I hope. Opening statement, the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Offices. Copies of the notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 3, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. So first, we have a four-meeting minutes for the month of May. We had a lot of meetings in May. So if you guys have any questions, please contact Mr. Michelle. And administrative reports, Mr. Saxton is not feeling well, so he had to leave early. So Dan, can you walk us through?
Yes, I'll review them all. Sure, I reviewed them with him before he left today. So the first item on the agenda is going to be a list of our appointments, our annual appointments for different state-required positions. For instance, the first one we have is our ADA 504 Compliance Officer, which is going to be Mr. Conklin. We have to adopt our annual plans, our body security plan for our food safety plan, the crisis management plan, and the pandemic plan about controlling diseases. Under E, we're going to appoint our affirmative action officer and our Title IX officer, and that would be Human Resources Director Margaret Cantali. Item number six is the here it designated person. A here it, I had a few people call me and say, "What's a here it mean?" That happens to be the Asbestos Hazardous Emergency Response Act. I'm the designated person for the district. I've been for about 25, 30 years. However, we've got to appoint somebody every year, so that will appoint me on Monday night. Item number seven is Integrated Test Management Coordinator. That's for pesticides. We have to have somebody who's trained on that. That would be Mr. Taylor, Ken Taylor from Building's Grounds. Then we have our hazardous communications officer. That's your right-to-know stuff. That's also Mr. Taylor. Your indoor air quality designee, that's Mr. Taylor also. He's got a lot of hats to wear. Item number 10, this is the recognition of our current bargaining units, which is the teachers' unit, the principals' unit, custodians' unit, all the different units. We'll recognize those Monday night. Number 11 is appointing myself as the Board Secretary, which I've been for a number of years now. The compliance officer for public contracts, that's myself also. I got a few hats back there. Designation of our school safety specialist, as you know, we hired a new person this year to fill this position. We hadn't ever had one before. That would be Patrick Dussane. We'll appoint him Monday night for next year. The grants assessment, Special Product Energy Bullying Coordinator, that would be the same person we had last year, Roseanne Russo-Walker. Then we have our liaison for homeless children and youth, and the person that's trained and certified in that area is Mr. Richard Benedict. He's also our manager of enrollment, crisis management, and summer programs. So that's another hat that he wears. Then number 16 is our appointment of our Middlesex County New Jersey School Boards Association Representative, and that's Mrs. Ward. I know she loves that one.
Yeah, you love that. Most qualified.
Item number 17 is the Oprah, Open Public Records Act Designee. That's myself. Anytime we have an Oprah request from anybody, I'm the one who completes it. Number 18 is the Special Education Medicaid Initiative. They call it SEMI. That's where we get federal monies for our special ed students who are eligible for Medicaid. That's Mr. Conklin. And the final one is for our student assistance coordinator, and that's our head nurse, which is Carol Martinez, who's housed over at Turbot Hoover. Okay, let me just make sure I get this down here. Okay.
Ms. Chan?
Yep, okay. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the approval of our crisis counselors. We've been doing this for a number of years now. We have Rutgers that actually handles that for us, and in addition to that, they also handle our employee assistance program that we've had for a couple of years now. So we'd like to appoint them Monday night also.
We're on the superintendent's report on item B.
Yes, that's the one now, yes. Item B, yes, that's correct. Next item is the agreement for the Comprehensive Equity Plan, which we approved completing it last month. We should have it completed by, but now, if it's not ready yet, we'll have it ready for the Monday meeting. We have to have the board approve it, and we'll be in next tier two. As a matter of fact, there's an already attached tier, actually. So it's already completed, so we're going to be looking for board approval on Monday night for the Comprehensive Equity Plan. It's a three-year plan. We have to do it, renew it every three years. Next one, next item, we have to renew every year our policies, the policies that are on our website currently. Unless there's changes to them, which we present to the public when that happens, we would like to renew the policies and bylaws that are currently on our website, and any changes will come up at a subsequent meeting. We just want to announce that we have the high school graduations on June 21, on Friday. JP Stevens will start at 1:30 at the rack at the Rutgers Athletic Center, and Edison High will follow at 5 o'clock. And everyone's welcome to come, all board members included. We'd like to see everyone there. Monday night, we're also going to have student recognition. This is the last one for the year. I think we have over 400 students we're going to recognize that night, so it's a nice list of students. They're doing a great job, and we would love to recognize them for that. We have a number of field trips that we want to prove Monday night. We have five students and an advisor from Woodrow Wilson for National History Day Club. They're going to College Park in Maryland from June 9th to June 13th. We have 50 students and three advisors from JP Stevens, FCCLA, attending the National Leadership Conference in Garden Grove, California from June 28th to the 5th of July. And obviously, that's after school gets out, so they don't miss any time for that. We also have 44 students and three advisors from Edison High's Cheerleading Program that's going to be attending NCA Rowan University Cheerleading Camp in Glassboro, New Jersey from July 12th to 15th. And that's also after school gets out, so they won't miss any time for that. Professional development documentation, we have a list of professional developments. It's a short list this month because we're getting into the summer. You'll see there's three on here, and you'll also notice that two of them are being funded by federal grants, Title II grants. We only have one that's being funded by the budget. Next item is we have some out-of-district placements. We have six out-of-district placements. Actually, two of them are actually credits because the kids actually transferred out early. One transferred out on May 14th, one transferred out on May 3rd. So one, we're saving $8,200; the other one, we're saving $15,000. We have four additional ones, but it's only for a partial year, so it's not all that much. They all start in May, $8,4700, $8,900, $8,000, and $6,600. So it's getting to the end of the school year, so you're not going to see big numbers now. And luckily, we kept that line fairly close to our budgeted amount this year. If you notice, I didn't make any transfers into that line. I may have a little bit at the end of the year now, but we're pretty close. It's a pretty good budget this year.
Good projection.
Yes. Next item is our annual appointment of all our professional services for special education. As you know, we usually put on, and I'm not sure how many there are here, there's 92. 92 different companies that we appoint for OTPT, speech evaluations, all the different services that our IEPs require. And the reason why we put so many is because if we only put one with the number of students, we have 1,600 kids that are unclassified. If we have services and the provider that we put on, if it's only one and they can't provide it, we're going to be in violation of federal law because IEPs, you have to follow those IEPs. So we always give ourselves an ample number of providers for different services, so if we can't go to our first one, and we always go to the lowest one, but if the lowest one can't handle it and we need it done by a certain date, we go to the second lowest one or the third lowest one. Yes?
Do you have to give them any kind of money upfront, like cold?
No, absolutely not. It's on an as-needed basis, and they know that. They get a copy of the resolution, so they know they're appointed, but they only do work when we are at, when we call them and ask them to do some work for us. Otherwise, they, and we've had, we have quite a number on here that we appointed, but we haven't spent the time with them. Okay, so then we'll go to the finance.
So there are some of them that, these all, we had a bidding process, right?
Yeah, we did an RFP for the OTPT.
Okay, yes.
That's the one that, that one runs for like almost $3 million.
Yes.
So that one, we specifically went out for an RFP.
Okay.
And we did give it to two different providers.
Yes, that I know.
Providing it this year.
Yep.
The Old Tony Tots, which is now United Therapy Solutions. And we also have Jump Ahead Pediatrics, who's using, actually doing servicing JP Stevens.
Okay.
So we pointed them again this year because their numbers came in better than everybody else.
Sure.
And they did a good job for us, so we were very happy to see that.
So the others, we just kept the...
Yeah, we put other ones on there just in case we, if either one of these two companies fail us and we want to go to somebody else, we appointed other alternates. But last year, we didn't have any problems, and we're anticipating no problems this year, but you never know.
Okay.
Okay, now, under finance, if you go to the investor report, you'll see for the month of May, we received interest in the amount of $66,145, bringing our total for the year up to $465,274 in total interest. That number's been growing because, as you know, the interest rate, the federal, the prime rate's been going up, so as that goes up, the interest we receive on our accounts go up also.
What is our average balance on these accounts?
Right now, I'm sitting with $22 million.
Okay.
And a lot of that is because of some of the large projects that we haven't paid for yet, but I also have the $6 million that you're going to see when you get into your, I have that money still sitting in our free balance. That's going to be appropriated now into our capital reserve.
Okay.
So that's the reason why we have as much money as we do.
So what's the interest the investors' bank is giving us?
Right now, we're getting close to 4%.
4%?
Yeah.
Okay.
The next six pages, yes?
Dan, do you negotiate for that 4%?
Yeah, I have, yes, I have had, I have had them come to my office so I could, was able to push them up a little bit. They didn't like it, but I didn't care.
Well, they're good.
Yeah, I got them up a couple of tenths of a percent. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And I, and I, you'll notice when you get through, when we get through here, you'll see I have a number of different financial facilities.
Yes.
That I can go to. If they don't give me enough, I go to the other ones, and if I get a better deal with somebody else, I go to somebody else. Not banking-wise, I'm talking about investment-wise.
Right.
Okay. All right, number, the next page is, the next six pages is the Board Secretary's report for the month of April 30th for that period of time, and also, the next page is the Treasurer's School Monies Report for the same period of time. Then we get into the resolutions that we're looking for approval on Monday night. As I just mentioned, I'm recommending that we move $6 million, which we talked about it when we put the budget together. If you remember, we got $3.5 million in additional state aid, but it was well after our budget was already in place. So we didn't do anything, what our plan was to put into the capital reserve at the end of the year, which is what we're doing. And also, on top of that, if you remember, we discussed this many, many times, when we went to Cigna, we saved a lot of money in our premiums, our health premiums, which were already in place with our budget. So the savings we had on that, I'm also putting in capital reserve. So I'm recommending that we move $6 million into the capital reserve so we can use that for any capital projects that we don't have in the budget right now. I do have a budget of $3 million in there right now for specific projects, but if other things come up, I can always draw from this money. Second thing is I'd like to bring the emergency reserve, which we used some of it for the police officers last year, if you remember. I'd like to bring that back to a million. Millions of max you can have. So I'd like to put $450,000 into the capital, emergency reserve to bring it back to $1 million. Number three is the, these are, you see, it's a big, long list of, we have all these different accounts. See, a lot of them are here, but a lot of them are also in the schools. Every single school has their own account, and we have control of it. Every single one of those is audited, but you'll see that there's a lot of, quite a few on here that we actually handle in central office. Actually, Mr. Pepe is the one who does the bank recs or is in charge of bank recs. Now, we got another accountant who does some of them for him. So this, it's quite a list of different accounts that we currently have.
Which school has the most money?
Yeah. And you also see that on the warrants, we have, we have two signatures for that. Mr. Shi is president of the board, and myself is the board secretary. So that's going to be in the resolutions also. And also, you'll see that there's 11 different financial institutions that I can go to if I don't feel I'm getting enough interest, or I can invest money into any one of these 11. Once I call them up and I get a proposal from them, or if they give me the best deal, I can park certain monies. But I don't want to tie up money for six months. I don't put in CD's, because if something happens, I don't want to pull it, then I lose all my interest. So it goes into like, into a kind of a, it's a financial, it's got to be safe. It's got to be a safe, it's got to be...
Savings kind of thing?
Yeah, exactly.
So you're getting 4% right now?
Right now, we're getting close to 4, yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Next, the next one is really designated me as the school fund investor, because you have to appoint somebody that actually have that responsibility for that, and that would be myself. Number five is the purchasing of goods and services resolution that specifies exactly how purchasing goes, as far as our bid limits, as far as our vote laws. You'll also notice in here that I also included our new purchasing agent, which will be starting on July 1st. She's, she's going to be in charge of this as well, myself, because I'm also a qualified purchasing agent. But we wanted somebody who's going to be actually focused on purchasing, because with a $250 million budget, for me to watch everything is a little tough, so I need a little more help, and I know the board was, was aware of that, so that's one of the reasons why they approved to put the purchasing agent in the budget this year, and she'll be starting in July.
July 1st?
I believe it's July 1st. She had to give 680 notes because she's currently the purchasing agent in Wayne, New Jersey, and everything, everything that we need, everything I said that we have a shortfall in is what I asked her specifically about, and she knew the answer to every single question because she's been doing it for a number of years in Wayne. And she actually lives in Edison on the other side of Route 1.
That's good.
So she'll be here five minutes. Next is the travel and expense reimbursement requirement by the state. It's $150, otherwise it's got to go on to the professional development. That's the one I showed you earlier, professional development documentation. If it's over $150, it's got to be pre-approved by the board before anybody can go out and be reimbursed for any travel. So that's what the resolution number six is for. Number seven is our petty cash fund. We close that out at the end of every year. I have to restart it July 1st of every year. It's an amount of 300 bucks. It's been like that ever since I've been here. The only thing we did do is our individual expenditure. We had it 50, we went to 75, and the main reason for that is because when we register a vehicle and we have to bring cash to the motor vehicles, it's 60 bucks. So I have a problem because I only can go up to 50. So we went to 75. Okay. Number eight is the approval of the Uniform Chart of Accounts, which is required by law. We have to follow the chart of accounts that the state requires, and we have to approve, have the board approve to use that minimum chart of accounts. Number nine is the designation of our official newspapers, the Star Ledger and Home News and the Star Ledger. Those are the ones we use, and that's one of the ones we use for all of our legal ads, including our bids.
Can we do this on some of these online newspapers? Because people now get more into the online.
Well, if it's, if it's either one of these, it's probably online already. I mean, if you give me the names of some other online papers that you want to send it to, I can do that.
How much do we pay them for this?
Depends on what the ad is.
Okay. Like a general meeting and stuff?
General meetings, 75, 80 bucks.
Per...
But the bids, like when I advertise all these professionals for the special ed, that's going to be like a half a page. That one might cost you a couple thousand bucks.
Okay.
And bid openings or postings for bids, for jobs?
Yeah.
Some of those are, because we make, some of those, we make a pretty good size ad.
Yeah.
And the Star Ledger is a lot more expensive than Home News, where we've had some that ran us $2,400, things like that. The next item, number 10, is the designation of our tax shelter annuity providers. We have, right now, we have eight of them, eight currently. We had 10, but there is a requirement, federal requirement, that they have to share information between all of them to make sure they don't exceed the federal, the federal limits that are, because if you're in two different tax shelter annuities and you go to the max on one and you go to the max on the other, now you're exceeding the IRS regulations. They have to share information to ensure that that doesn't happen. And I had a couple who weren't, were not willing to share, so goodbye. Number 11 is the designated for admin partners, who actually is the company that does cost us anything, the providers of the 403Bs pay the fee, and they all agreed to pay the fee. That was another thing, I, if they didn't agree to pay the fee, goodbye. So in this case, admin partners, we send all of the 403 monies to them, and they actually designate it out to the provider for the employee. Item number 12 is the list of our outstanding warrants. After a warrant, one of our checks is outstanding for over a year, we write it off. If they don't cash it in a year's time, you know, we just write it off and we just recoup it. Now, in my case, going back to July of 17 through June of 18, I had a total of $11,062, and most of these, believe it or not, happen to be aid and lieu of checks. You know, we send out aid and lieu. Once they fill out to be 16 for aid and lieu monies, they get $1,000 per student, and we send it out to their homes.
Yes.
Either if they move, they don't tell us. I don't know where these things go, but they never cash them. So at the end of it, after a year's time, they wouldn't be able, at that point, they shouldn't be able to do it anyway. It's a stale dated check. If they could bring it back to me, I would give them a replacement check, but in this case, we write them off. We had the same thing with some salary account checks, same exact thing. Most of them happen to be substitutes that, for some reason, they don't cash your checks. I don't know why.
$22,000, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
Altogether.
They're over a year old.
If they find that check, please come in and, you know, cash it.
Correct, exactly, yes. That's why we try to push everyone to go to direct deposit.
Yeah, $4,000. Biggest one, like $4,000.
Yes, yep, yep.
Wow.
Item number 13, every year, at the end of the year, we have to list for the board all of the vendors that have state contracts that we use during the year. That's what number 13 is, is a list of all the different companies that we use that have state contracts. We're required, required to provide that to the board every year. We just got this today, yesterday, actually, the actually, ESEA grant money, which is our title monies, Title I through IV. I actually ran a list of how much we got last year versus what we got this year, and we actually got about $189,000 more this year than we did last year in federal money. Biggest one was Title I.
189,000?
Yeah. We got 169, actually, 169,767 more. The Title I, we got another $105,000. Last year, we got $1,222,000. This year, we got $1,327,000. So I ran up the numbers, and last year, all of the federal grants, which is not only the title monies, but also the IDEA, we got a total of $5,516,000 last year. We're getting $5,686,000 this year, so we went up by 169,000.
Okay.
That's federal money. We can only use it for specific purposes, but we're happy to see an increase.
Oh, absolutely.
Item number 15, the roof replacements for the, remember last month?
Yes.
We rejected two.
Correct.
Two of them to go out for a new bid with that new foam system, and we had three bidders, and...
This isn't, this is for the foam one?
Yes, this is the foam. This is the high-grade. High-grade is the company that we met with.
Okay.
He was, actually, was the low bidder on all, on all of them. The only reason that we're holding off, because they have, don't forget, in the specifications, they said they were going to go do a scan of the roof.
Correct.
And only replace the insulation where it was saturated.
Uh-huh.
Because in the, in the previous one, we were going to replace the whole installation. In this case, that they said they'll only, they'll cut out the section that's wet and replace just that. Well, they couldn't do that because the stones were still up on the roof.
They got to suck out the stones.
Now that we have the number for this, they have to give me a number for the scan.
Okay.
And the replacement of these insulation. So I'll come back with that when I get it. But this, these were the base bids, so I'd like to get at least the base bids done, so the high-grade has authorization to go ahead and do that work.
So this is, this is cheaper than, than the traditional bid we had?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Much cheaper.
Yes.
Yes.
But, but when you put the insulation and...
Well, let's see, let's see.
It'll be a little higher, but you're still going to save money.
Yes, that's what we're doing, you know?
Right.
Just go, try to save any money we can.
Right.
This is good.
Yesterday, they were at the Washington School, and they vacuumed up all the stones.
Yes.
And they're going to be doing that, they're actually doing the scan today.
Okay.
Tomorrow, they're supposed to be at Martin Luther King's, and get the stones off that roof, and then give us, give us the number for the amount of how much insulation has to be changed, and then we'll, then we'll get a hard number for you for everything, but right now, just for the insulation of the foam and all the other things that go along with it.
Yeah, these are the, these are just the worst schools when it comes to roofing, so you know, we'll finally fix it.
Correct.
Completely.
Yep, yep.
And we're saving a little bit of money here.
Now, the next item is bid transportation. We had a bid opening today, actually, and I have the results, and I'll get that to the board. Judy just finished it up. The bid opening was at 10:00 today and 11:00 today, so we have, all of the bids came in. They weren't as bad as I thought they'd be, but they're still higher than last year. And seven routes that we had out for bid, nobody bid on them, so we're going to put those out again. Once we go out a second time, if we had no bidders on any of the seven, then I can negotiate a contract with somebody, but I have to go out and lose twice.
Okay.
So that'll be, that'll be on your agenda for Monday.
Okay.
All right?
And real quick on the buses.
Yes.
Are we also taking into consideration our own drivers and buses for, for any of these routes?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, those, that's a given. They work, they work eight hours a day.
Got you.
Their contract's seven, but they work more closer to eight.
Okay.
Every single day. But these are for routes that, and this also includes after-school activities.
Got you.
That was another one, did they?
So we, we do plan to hire our own driver?
Absolutely.
And my understanding, there are some potential that's, we can, we can look in, you know, we can potentially hire through the, during the summer?
Yes.
So if they are hired, if they can cover these routes, then...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And we've done that before.
Okay.
If we get, if we get a number of new drivers and we, and we can start covering some of the routes that we contract out, we'll all we do is call them up prior to it starting and let them know that we're gonna, you know, we're not going to go with those routes, and we've never had an issue, especially with, uh, Dakar and Barker are our biggest contractors, and we've done that to them a number of times. They know, they know it's gonna be coming if that happens. Uh, next item is the Education Service, Services Commission of New Jersey. They went out for a cooperative bid. It's the same company they had last year, which is Treehouse for our, for our cartridges. We went out on our own two years ago. We had a company called, um, the Office Pal, and, uh, we ended up with a lot of, lot of cartridges that failed. It wasn't, it wasn't good, so...
They're not a pal.
I mean, their numbers came in ridiculously low, and I said, I don't know how they're gonna do for this. Well, I know why now.
Not a pal they didn't want.
Right, so we went to Treehouse this year, and I had no problems. I didn't get a single bad cartridge from anybody, which I had a pile of them on my, in my office when I had the other company. So, we'd like to go with them again. They won the bid again for the Ed Service Commission, so I wanna appoint them one more time. Uh, then we have the bids. These are the, these are the bids for athletic supplies. This comes from Ed, Ed Data. And, uh, they go out to bid, and they give it to the lowest bidder in every single instance, and we have a number of bids. This, this, athletic supplies is a fairly long list, because they, they all specialize in certain things, so we have a number of different, uh, vendors that we appoint. Uh, then you get it to, uh, your cooperative bid for your auto visual, your family consumer science, your fine arts, classroom supplies. These are all through Ed Data, who's our bidding consultant. Uh, so they go out for us, and they do the bidding for us, and then we appoint, we have to award it after they tell me who the low bid was in every instance. So, um, you'll, you'll see. We'll give you a copy of the list of all the materials. But there's quite a number of bids here, as you can see. There's probably about...
Yeah.
Twenty of them.
Yep.
And I know Mrs. Conway called me about Rocketry Supplies. She wanted to know what that was. It happens to be one of, was part of our technology department. And I said, well, why don't you just call it Technology Supplies, but they wanna call it Rocketry Supplies? Okay. Uh, science supplies, special needs supplies, teaching aid supplies, technology supplies, world language supplies. It's, it's a big, long list of, uh, of supplies that we get from Ed Data, and they do a great job for us. We've been using them for thirty-some odd years, so, uh, and, and right now, actually, we get a ten percent discount on our annual fee, because now district, countywide, we go through a Middlesex County Ed Service Commission, and they give us a ten percent discount to all of Middlesex County that's now in this. We, we, I think we were the first ones back in the day, 'cause I know, remember New Brunswick calling and saying, how come you never told anybody about this? Not everybody knows. Uh, the next item is the, uh, joining the Ed Service Commission of, of New Jersey, which is the Middlesex County one, uh, for all of their services that they provide. Every year, you have to appoint them again to do those kind of services for you, so we'd like to do that on Monday. We have to adopt our standard operating procedure manual and our inter, internal control manual, uh, every year, and we update that every year. Then we have the, um, Ed Service Commission that we, the number thirty-seven, the thirty-nine is related to that, but we also want them to do our Title One and our IDEA for non, for non-public schools. There's, there's monies that is, that's designated in those federal grants for non-public schools, and we don't have anybody right now to, that handle it. They do it for us. And the, uh, the only thing we do have to pay for is the Title One services. They charge us four percent, and I, I have that in my budget, but they do the services for us. They monitor everything. That, you, if you remember, every single month, I give you a list of all these different non-public monies that are spent by other, other schools, non-public schools, and we have to approve it in advance, and that's what this would be for. We want to, uh, with the Ed Service Commission, same Ed Service Commission, we want to join them for our cooperative purchasing for the transportation. That's, this one, we, we, we use this, once we get all of our bus routes in place, and we go out to bid on something, we can't get any bidders, we go to the Ed Service Commission. They have a lot, a lot more companies that they draw from, but the prices are going through the roof. That's, that's the thing I'm, I'm worried about. So, we were very, more fortunate that we were able to get our contractors to renew at one point four-five percent, which is the state law. They couldn't, we couldn't go above that, and we got them to agree to that, which I was very happy about. I was worried that we were all gonna go out to bid again, and they come in twenty percent higher. So, we were, we got that in place. We also have, number forty-one is our inter-local purchasing agreement with the township. When we, when we purchase light materials, like salt, ice melt, paper supplies, things like that, we can purchase off their bids. They can purchase off our bids to try to save the taxpayer money in either case.
It's cheaper doing it that way, Dan?
Yes.
Than Middlesex County?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, yep. Uh, number forty-two is the appointment of our auditor for the nineteen-twenty school year, that'd be for next year, uh, in the amount, as you can see. He's been here for a number of years. He does a good job for us, uh, so we'd like to appoint that Monday night.
Yeah, can I have a question for that?
Sure.
Um, 'cause we're gonna hear the, um, you know, audit later on, you know, close session. Uh, he has been with us for a long time, right?
Yes.
And, uh, did we go out for a bid for this one?
We did way back in the day, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And, uh, we have not been rebidding for this one?
We haven't put a RFP. It's not a bid. It's a...
RFP, okay.
I can, I can do that if you guys want me to.
Yeah, can we?
Yeah.
All right.
So, you wanna pull this off for Monday?
Is that a professional services?
It is.
You don't have to go out to bid?
You don't have to bid. No, that's why it's an RFP.
You don't have to, but you can?
You can, yes. You don't have to, but you can.
But they've been with us for a long, long time.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
So, uh, if you want, we'll pull this off for Monday night, and we'll put an RFP out.
Yes, please.
And once we get the R, the responses back from the RFP, the last time we went for an RFP on this, they were, they were significantly lower than everybody else.
Okay.
But it's been a while since we've gone out that way, so, okay, so we're gonna table this one?
Yes.
All right.
And this, this for all, this is for next year?
Yeah, next year.
Oh, so we can, we have some time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Okay, uh, the appointment of our athletic physician, um, Dr. Rusinello. He, he agrees to do it for fifty dollars an hour for our athletic teams when he does our physicals for us. Uh, so we'd like to appoint him again for one more year. He's, he's agreed to do that. Uh, we have an annual athletic training plan of care.
Yeah, just for, for this one.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I heard some, um, complaints from the parents that his hour's not that, uh...
Convenient?
Convenient, yeah.
I have, I haven't heard anything, any problems.
All right.
They have a problem, just let me, just let me know what it is.
Okay.
I'll find out from him if, if it's a problem with the hours. But, uh, as far as I know...
I don't know, I don't know if they're talking about weekends and stuff, 'cause, you know, um, the kids had some issue they wanna see and just tried to make appointment for a couple of times, so...
Well, if you hear of any problems, just come and call me or send me an email.
All right.
So, I can find out, so that's the first I hear about it.
All right.
All right?
Thanks.
Our athletic directors have, are required annually to come up with athletic training plan of care, which we renewed for this year, so we need to adopt that for next year also. We also need to appoint a chief school physician, which is Dr. Aziz. He's been here for a couple of years. He gets an annual salary of fifteen thousand, and for, and, and we send, anytime we have students that need to be, uh, examined or whatever, uh, we send it to Dr. Aziz.
Now, how do you choose that doctor?
We, we, we had, we had trouble finding somebody, so Chris, Chris...
Fifteen thousand?
Yeah, Chris, Chris Conklin was able to find him, and he's, he's been doing a good job for us, and we were worried he wasn't gonna do it again this year, so then we have to go out and try to find somebody. This is another professional service, obviously. Uh, but he does a good job for us, and at fifteen grand...
I've heard good things. It's just, I was wondering how you...
Yeah, Mr. Conklin went out and actually was able to recruit him somehow or another. I'm not sure how he did it, but I was happy he did, 'cause we need somebody. We actually have to have somebody on staff.
This is for our staff, checkup and this, whatever we need for, for schools?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
That's correct, yep. Then we have a list of, number forty-six is a big, long list of all of our software packages that we currently, currently use, which is like Genesis for us student records, Edgemet, which is our, our financials, and, uh, that one, we, we are looking to move to Genesis as, as of July first. We may have to pay them a smaller fee, because we have to continue to be able to maintain our previous records. Otherwise, we're starting off free, we're brand-new with no records at all. So, uh, I'm gonna review that one. So, uh, that one, I'm just gonna put a question mark on, so see if that's gonna stay or not. School due does, we have two things for that. That's for the, uh, building use, and we also have that for our work orders. Uh, software advantage, uh, that's, uh, that's the old TRIPS program for transportation. Uh, frontline technologies, that's for AESOP for our, uh, applications, and Apple Trax. So, we have the, for substitutes. AESOP is for the substitute program for the subs to call in, and Apple Trax is our automated, uh, for, uh, hiring practices. They do it applications online. Destiny Library Software, Follett. Uh, we, we have quite a number, as you can see. Heartland is a part of our food, food service. That one gets charged against the food service line. Blackboard is the one for the hosting of the, for the information going out to the parents. Our E-Rate Consulting, as you know, we get E-Rate, federal E-Rate monies, most of, mostly for our communication services, uh, so we have a, a company, the E-Rate Consulting does that for us.
Dan, can I ask a question? What do we get from SHI?
That's actually, uh, it's technology-driven stuff. No, it's not, it's not, it's not yours.
Nothing to do with me.
No, as a matter of fact, we just had, uh, it's part of the ACES program for communications. ACES, the ACES program is a, is a, it's a statewide, the School Board Association, the Superintendent's Association, and this Business Administration Association have combined, put together this cooperative bid, it's, and it's for communications, and, and, uh, we, we use that one for this, and it's for technology. It's for all technology stuff for Mr. Barker.
Yeah, we, we bought some, um, computers from them before, right?
Yes, yes.
Like a Chromebooks before.
So, because it's a part of the ACES program, we don't have to bid it ourselves. It's already a cooperative bid that we're, that we participated. Uh, item number forty-seven, as I talked about, all those bids that we had earlier, this is the appointment of our purchasing consultant, which is Ed Data, who does all that stuff for us, and as you see, it's, it used to be twenty-five thousand. Uh, it's twenty-two, twenty-two, seven seventy for next year. They give us a ten percent discount because of the fact we're going through the Ed Service Commission. Uh, number forty-eight is our, uh, our, our architect for roofing, Mr. Rianzi, who does a great job for us, and he's at one twenty-five an hour, and he does any projects, any major projects, he'll do it for four percent, which is the lowest rate I've seen for any architect. Our lowest before that was six, and he does it for four. So, we're looking to appoint him for next year. Uh, item number forty-nine is our, uh, risk insurance premiums for next year. We're staying with the School Board's Insurance Group. As you know, we, we, we have to, we have three-year commitment with them. Uh, and actually, this number actually is actually thirty-seven thousand lower than this year's. So, that, how do you, you know, I mean, mainly because of our student accident claims. We have very, our very good experience with our student accident claims, and our workman's comp, our mod's under five, under point five. So, those two came way down. The one that went up is school board legal, and that's where you get into your special ed cases. That's the one where we have our, most of our exposure. But it is thirty-seven thousand lower than last year. Uh, number fifty is our school lunch process for this year, the same exact, we kept them this way for a long time. Elementary's at two seventy, two dollars seventy-five cents. Middle schools at three dollars. High schools are three and a quarter. The reduced lunch is forty cents. The milk's fifty cents, and the adult lunch is four fifty, same as last year. Number fifty-one is our school breakfast prices. It's a dollar at every level, same thing we've had since we started it, and we'd like to renew that for next year also. Number fifty-two.
Sorry, sorry. Is there reduced for, uh...
For breakfast?
Breakfast.
No, it's a dollar for everyone. Uh, if, if they get free lunch, they get free breakfast.
Okay.
But there's no reduced fee for breakfast. It's only a dollar as it is.
Okay.
So, uh, but we do get federal monies for our breakfast and for lunch. State money for lunch only, but federal money for both.
Dan, why is this milk listed out, the white milk and chocolate milk?
Well, they, we always put the milk price on here. We don't put all the a la carte stuff, but milk has always been listed here. We always, we always put the milk price on here. That's, that's the, if you buy a la carte, if you get a milk with a normal lunch, but if you want another milk, it costs fifty cents.
Okay. The normal lunch, can they, can they get chocolate milk, or do they have to...
No, they can get chocolate or, or regular milk. Yeah, either way. It doesn't cost anymore. All right? Uh, item number fifty-two.
Yeah.
Once we put our budget together, based on our budgeted numbers, it generates a tuition rate for elementary, middle school, high school, special ed, all our different, uh, belt soft contained classes, and these are the rates that are generated by our current budget for next year. So, these are the rates we have approved. So, what happens is, if we have a homeless student who comes into our district, and they have to pay us tuition, these are the rates I have to charge. However, after the state, our audit's completed and goes to the state, and the state certifies our rates. If our rates are too low, I gotta go back after that, whoever I charged, and charge them more. But if I charge them too much, I gotta give them refund. That's required by law. Uh, item number fifty-three, uh, as you know, Chartwell's has been providing for a number of years, the Latchkey Program, the snacks, and we have to approve that again for next year. It's, it's still at eighty cents per snack, and it's part, you know, that's, that's, they, they pay Chartwell directly, and, uh, the, the eighty cents is included in the, the monthly fee that you pay for Latchkey Program. We don't pay it. The town, the people, the parents pay it to the township. It's a township for an operation. Number fifty-four is the, uh, appointment, or, or the joining of the School Boards Association, which I know Teresa's thrown out.
Teresa's gonna vote no on this one.
But, uh, but right now, it's still a mandate, a mandate that we have to be part of the School Boards.
And what if we said no? What would happen to us?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
To join in the School Board Association?
You know, all the required trainings, the orientations, everything that the new board members have to do, that's all given to us by the School Board Association. If we didn't join it, you wouldn't, they wouldn't provide it, obviously, if you're not paying them the dues that they're entitled to. Uh, what would happen? I don't know.
So, by statute, you're required to...
But what if we don't?
Then you run the risk of losing state aid.
That's the answer.
We don't wanna lose state aid. We're finally getting some. We don't wanna give it back. Uh, the next item, number fifty-five, is, uh, joining the New Jersey State Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association, which we have to do in order for our athletic teams to play, uh, in the, in the NJSA tournaments. Uh, so we, uh, we need to have the board approve to, to join that association. We also have to let the board know, and there's a list here of all of the contracts we either plan to renew, award, or expire, all of our current contracts. We have to let you know what the status is of those at the end of the year, so we have a list of that for, on number fifty-six. Number fifty-seven, uh, this is, happens to be one of the non-public security aid purchases for John Kenny Childcare. It's a non-public school. Uh, this is one of the ones where the board has to approve the PO in advance before they can spend it, and this is going through the Ed Service Commission. They're the ones who handle it for us, and as soon as the board approves it Monday night, I will send them Tuesday to let them know that it's been approved. Number fifty-eight is a small list of some obsolete books and math kits for a couple of schools. Then we had the bill list for the month of May, an amount of twenty million, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand. And number sixty, which is the last one, I think, yeah. Is, uh, is some transportation routes that we, uh, we, we need to award for the rest of the year. It's only, it's only for, uh, from the middle of, of May to the end of May, and the amounts that are listed here. And that concludes, yes?
Dan, um, obsolete items?
Yes.
I see there's a whole slew of middle school social studies books.
Yes.
And obvious we can, we'll get them, but mathematic kits?
There are kits, I guess, that they don't, don't use anymore, or they're, I'm not sure.
And then what do you do with them?
Uh, well, if, if they don't, if they're not part of the curriculum anymore, and we have no use for them, if somebody else can use them, we would donate them to somebody else. But in this case, I'm not sure what those things are. My, my gut feeling is that, that they're gonna get tossed. I don't even know what the, the kids are, what, what kind of kids they are, to tell you the truth. But we get it from the school. When they have something that they said, we can't use this anymore. If it was another school in the district that could use it, we'd give it to them. But I just don't know who that is, so we'd have to have our math supervisor let us know what that is, and some, can that somebody else use it? Does somebody else still use that? But if it's part of the curriculum, if one school doesn't use it, probably all schools don't use it. That's my gut.
Okay, yeah.
I have a question. Um, the family consumer science, um, money that they get?
Yes.
Is six thousand, one hundred thirty-six ninety-nine. How many schools?
Which item is this?
What?
Which item?
You're talking about the bid?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, twenty-one.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, you're talking about the bid? You're talking about the bid, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that supplies for the, the FCC LA teachers that put in for, uh, supplies through Ed Data, and that's just the bid for that.
Okay.
That's just for the bid for that. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head what schools that is for, but you know, we have the FCC LA in both high schools.
Right.
And we have it in some of the middle schools. I'm not, maybe even all four, all four middle schools. I'm not sure. Three of them? I know Hoover is one of them.
Hoover, Adams, and Wilson.
And Wilson, okay, all right. So, that could be the supplies for all, all of them.
Okay.
Uh, but, of course, they're, they're gonna buy some, lots more supplies during the year, and most of, most cases, it's, you know, food that we get from shop, right, for preparation.
Yeah, that was my question.
Oh, no.
'Cause six thousand dollars is not a lot of money for food for those kids. Yeah.
You got it. That's for the classroom. That's probably classroom supplies. All right? That concludes my report, Mr. Sheehan.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, board member, open discussions. Anyone? Yes, Mrs. Rowley?
Um, on Monday of this week, we had a get-together of all of the wingman teachers that were involved in the program this year, and we had a wonderful day, uh, talking about the successes of this year and taking time to plan for next year. I've just gotten such wonderful feedback from the teachers, the children, their parents, on how it's going. And I also wanna say thank you to Mr. Saxton, um, to the Board of Ed, and to Felicia from Chartwell's for providing such good food for us. Thank you to everybody for making this happen. It's really been a worthwhile endeavor.
Anybody else? Oh, yeah, Mrs. Conway.
Is he going?
You.
Uh, I was going to wait till Monday, uh, but knowing that recognition is Monday, they'll probably get, uh, recognized again on Monday, so I want to be able to, uh, make sure that they're recognized, uh, these two young people. One of my other hats is chairperson of the PTAPTO Scholarship, Philip J. Capalupo. And, uh, at the two senior awards, uh, we awarded two six-thousand-dollar scholarships to, um, one for Edison High and one for JP Stevens. And each and every year, I'm just blown away with the, uh, wonderful students and how much they do and how successful they are. And I just wanted to, um, talk about them. Uh, the young lady, Erica Johnson, is from Edison High, and the list of things that this young lady does, from the Spanish Honor Society to the Promised Soup Kitchen, uh, and back and forth, working at an ice cream parlor. She'll be going to, uh, Howard University, uh, in the fall, uh, and her dream is to be a sportscaster. Uh, at JP Stevens, the young man is Anudraj, and I actually taught him third grade. I was so thrilled. Uh, and I didn't know upfront that, uh, he was the winner. But from being a, a boy scout to, uh, many honor societies, he'll be, um, going to Stevens Institute of Technology in Hoboken, and he's going to specialize in aerospace engineer. Uh, I couldn't be more proud of these students, and I just wanted to let them know that I know they'll do wonderful in the future.
I am pretty sure they will. Okay, yeah, Mrs. Erica.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Um, I attended two events over the past couple of weeks. One was the Edison Senior Awards Night, uh, which was a great event put on by Mr. Ross and his staff. Um, plenty of scholarship money abound, uh, which is always a good thing for not only students, but parents, uh, to help them afford college educations. Also, uh, attended an event called Guru Vandana, and this is the flyer, on June first. Uh, it was at Mini Beville. And what this organization does is recognizes, uh, teachers across the county, not only Edison. Uh, there were Woodbridge teachers there. There was the Scataway teachers there, there were administrators from all the districts and, and things along those lines. They put on a great show. Um, the children, ages from five years old all the way up to high school, put on some nice shows. Um, they blessed all those teachers that were there, um, and, uh, washed their feet or whatever they did, and all their rituals, but it was an amazing event. Um, and I'd like to thank them for inviting me and, uh, thank all the teachers and recognize all the teachers, teachers and administrators across the state, uh, for all they do for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I see none, but, um, I'm gonna brought up a topic that was discussed at the previous meetings. For board members, we received a lot of, uh, emails from parents about the subscription bus increase. So, I think Shannon probably got the most. So, uh, this weekend, um, Mrs. Penn, myself, and, and Mr. Brescher, he, he probably will join us a little bit later. Uh, we met some of the, um, the parents who was leading this, uh, um, subscription, you know, um, partition. When, when I spoke to them before we, 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 we talked, um, I said that, uh, the partition was asking for free busing for everybody, and, and I say, if you're talking, coming to talk about free busing, we're not sitting there and talk. If you're talking about, uh, not increase the bus of subscription, uh, we're not gonna meet. Okay? So, they agreed on it, and, uh, we met. So, there's a proposal, um, from them is to not increase the hundred fifty dollars in one shot. Instead, uh, breaking up into three years, uh, each year, uh, increase fifty dollars. Okay? The, the reason why, you know, we explained to them why we wanna increase that, that big jump is, um, because the overcrowded schools. If the parents actually do go to school and drop off and pick up the kids, you know, it's really very unsafe in some of our schools. We tried to reduce the, the, the traffic going into the schools. So, we wanted, the increase the price is to, um, to cover the cost, to, to provide more subscription buses. What we wanted... What we want to do is we want to open up subscription to everyone. So, if anyone who has interest, we can provide that bus. Before, I think what we talked about is to get us to break even, we need probably thirty-five, thirty-six kids, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, if we can bring one bus into a school, you can reduce, you know, thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-six cars, that's a big help. But I guess the parents felt it's too steep increase. So, the proposal on the table is to do fifty-dollar increase for each year for three years. And we will be asking the parents to check out a box when they register their children, or on the parent portal, to say if you're interested in subscription busing. The scenario is that some of the parents, when you first get in, you try to subscribe for the busing, and you don't get it, you just say, "Okay, I'm not getting it." So, I stopped putting my interest there. So, I guess for what we want to do, we want to collect the data this year. We'll see, you know, the demand for the subscription bus for next year. If we can actually, if we have enough interest this year, and we can have enough children to, on a route, to have a subscription bus, and we can break even, we will continue to, we will also look for providing that service. But to break even, we might probably need forty, forty-five, forty-two kids to get a bus. So, the proposal is to increase fifty dollars for the next three years. And in our registration system and on the parent portal, we're going to add a little checkbox for the parents to check if they are interested. And the other thing is, since we can have the new routing software we're going to use this year, it's linking the student's address with the Genesis system. So, the software can talk directly to the student registration system, so we can find an optimal route. In the past, we have, okay, you have one stop over here, and it's been here for ten years, continue to stop here. But some of the cases, the students actually have graduated or move on to other schools. So, you might have, you know, one block down the road, they have more students. So, the software that we're going to use this year is going to help us to locate where the crowd of students are, so we can have a better, more efficient bus stop, rather than continue to stop the same place for the past ten years. So, that's what we're going to, you know, open up for the floor to the board members to know opinions on fifty-dollar increase for, you know, each year for the next three years. Yes, Mrs. Conway?
My only question is, are you looking to get more students to get on these buses?
Yes. Providing more, we already maxed out on a lot of the routes. Okay, so, we want to increase more routes and bring more subscription buses, so the kids can get on, to reduce the traffic in the schools.
And are we able to get more buses to accommodate more students?
Well, we have to get an interest first. If we have enough people interested, then we can look into it. Then I might have to go a bit later to see if we can get some services.
Is that going to be a problem, Dan?
When I was down at the convention last week, we had a workshop specific on busing. And as bad as it, we've said it's been, it's going to be worse. They're going to even make the CDL licensing even harder than it was. And I just had a bid opening today. I had three bus companies in front of me, and I asked Barker, not Barker, Dapper, because they're the only ones that I'm aware of that are providing private busing in areas that we don't have subscription. I asked, "What do you charge them for your private busing now?" It's nine-hundred bucks. We're six-fifty. And of course, I just want to make sure the board knows that our policy now says, and we haven't been following our policy for a while, because Dr. Mallon didn't want to increase anything. Our policy does say that it has to be a self-sustaining program. And the one reason why they put that in there is because they felt this was a non-mandated service, and the rest of the taxpayer shouldn't have to fit the burden of it. So, that's the reason why it was written the way it is.
And in the past, since we weren't making the right amount of money, how much were we adding to it? How much did we have to spend in addition to what the people were paying?
It was costing us over two-hundred thousand.
So, we have probably, what, two thousand kids on subscription buses?
Yeah.
So, we have, you know, yeah, so you can do the math. And thinking that since we have quite a lot of savings with all the measurements that we have been doing, hoping that those savings can be used to subsidize the cost of not meeting the six-fifty break-even point. So, that was another thinking behind that.
See, I would just be afraid that we would get so many more students and then not have enough buses to take care of the students. So, I don't know, it sounds like the chicken before the, you know, the hen house.
Double-edged sword.
Yeah. So, that's the only thing I'm afraid of, if we're trying to induce more students to fill the buses. Do we fill the buses now?
Yes, we do.
We're at a capacity of most of them. That's why we have a waiting list on a lot of the subscription buses. Once we fill the bus, if there's no seats available, we have a waiting list. And as soon as a student moves out of town, we give it to the first person on the list.
And have we satisfied the waiting list in years past?
We've had, we've had waiting lists that lasted all year, and we never got a seat available. And if I only have ten people on the list, I can't put a bus stop for ten people. It's going to cost me thirty-five grand, and I'm only going to get five thousand.
Yeah, the thing that we spoke to the parents, because they obviously said that, you know, after a couple of years, they stopped trying. They stopped trying to say, you know, "I'm interested in subscription busing, because I'm not going to get it." So, introducing the, you know, in the registration system, to allow the parents to put the, you know, their preferences will actually help. If we have, you know, let's say, two-hundred students on a subscription bus, and we can only provide one, then we'll provide, at least we can provide one, you know? So, that will reduce the traffic into the schools.
Oh, I realize that. It's just I don't want to promise somebody that they're going to do that.
It's based on availability.
It's based on availability, and, you know, I think the parents that we spoke to, they all understood that, you know, we're not promising anything, and we'll see what we can do, we'll try our best. And even five-fifty, we're still not at a break-even point yet. So, you know, that's...
So, it's five-fifty for two thousand students? It will be five-fifty for two thousand students?
We have close to a thousand people who have already paid the six-fifty, so that means I have to refund the...
Refund them. If the board agrees on it, yes. So, that's the proposal.
And also, as you know, we also said we would have a payment plan if they don't want to pay the six-fifty upfront. Now, almost everybody in the past has paid the five-hundred upfront. It's a hundred-and-fifty more, I realize that, but we did say we would let them stretch it out. As a matter of fact, Mr. Pepe is the one who's doing the contracts for those right now. And we were debating about how we, you know, how do we want to set it up, sixty-five dollars a month? Or do you want it to, you know, five-hundred upfront, and then the rest of it over the rest of the year? Because everybody paid the five-hundred upfront before, so it shouldn't be a burden. But we're not sure how we're going with it yet, we're still kicking it around.
That's a lot of work, so, yeah, but I think before, when we talked about payment plans, we're more talking about families who want a reduced lunch plan, right?
Yeah, if they're on reduced lunch, yes.
Yeah, because, but, yeah, free, people have free lunches, they don't pay anyway.
Correct.
So, it's more to help these families who has, you know, a little difficulty. So, if you want to open it up, there'll be more work for you guys. But if that's something you want to do, that's probably fine. But first, we have to decide, you know, what is the bus rate for next year? Anybody?
I have no problem spanning it out to fifty, 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 as long as that after the third year, we're breaking even per our policy.
But will we?
Well, we're going to have to look at that every year.
The six-fifty that we talked about?
Is break-even now.
The year we're just finishing up.
Right, right.
Now, as I said, we're just opening some bids, and the prices were higher.
Right.
So, the six-fifty is probably going to go up.
Right.
In three years, six-fifty is not going to cover.
No, I'm sure. So, we're never going to catch up if we don't do something to try to catch up.
Yeah, I think we can look at, you know, at the end of the third year, how much we're off, then we can look into it.
Or even after next year. I mean, maybe the following year, instead of fifty, 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 we do fifty next year, and if it goes up, we maybe got to do sixty or sixty-five, and then the final year, we may have to do seventy-five. So, something along those lines, I'd be for that. That's fine with me.
And I just want to reiterate that, you know, with the data that we're going to collect, because right now, a lot of parents, like for me, for one example, you know, after a few years, I know I'm not going to get the subscription bus. So, I just, there's never a form for me to fill in that I wanted to get on the subscription bus. So, if we put that data out there, we collected, we are going to see, maybe there's a big increase in the number of parents.
Big increase, yeah.
Yeah, so, maybe that's going to make it easier to break even, yeah.
So, I'd be in agreement for five-fifty next year. And then we'll talk about it the next...
Sure. Any other?
Good.
Oh, you're good? So, all right, do we need a vote on this?
I would have to put it on the agenda for Monday.
You put it on the agenda for Monday, so we'll have a... Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Vote on Monday?
Because we voted on six-fifty.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, any other board member comments on? Okay, seen none, so, public comments. Yes?
Anthony Diemer in fifteen, Rodax Circle. I was going to congratulate Mr. Brescher, but I saw him at the other meeting, I know he's on his way on his primary victory. And I think it's important, and I know I spoke to Rich about it. It's an opportunity, I think, if he wins in the general election, to really start bridging the gap between the council and the school board. I think it's a really big opportunity. So, I hope if Rich wins, he takes advantage of that, and the board takes advantage of that. There needs to be, the disconnect between the board and all the other branches is evident. So, hopefully, that begins to heal the, you know, bridge the gap, so to speak. Also, I was just at the council meeting, I brought up to the council again, the scheduling. And I know Ms. Conway has shared this view with me, and that is the scheduling, the meeting on the same day. So, I encourage council to do a better job next year of not scheduling it. People in this town are really, they're yearning for transparency, they really are. That's very clear after last week. So, I know we've been Facebook-living a lot of this stuff, which has been helping. But hopefully, the board and the council take over those responsibilities going forward. So, I just wanted to raise those two issues, thank you.
So, we said we're going to try in June, right? Yeah, so, we're working...
I appreciate that, man. You keep your job, don't worry.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, I'm definitely looking for the collaboration between the township and school board. You know, I hope that Mr. Brescher gets elected in November. So, it'll be more collaboration between the two entities. And there are a lot of things we can work together, be more efficient. At the end of the day, it's a benefit for taxpayers. So, definitely looking forward to that. Okay, yes, Maria?
Hi, thank you, Maria Orchid, eighty-three Jefferson. On Friday, we're going to go to the Sustainable Jersey Symposium. So, I was wondering, what are the steps that the Board of Education are doing to make the schools more sustainable? Energy efficiency, or that of that nature?
You brought up a very good topic. Actually, I was going to ask that. I mentioned before that we're looking to put in solar panels on some of our roofs. Those roofs that are sun, they can, you know, hold the weight. The first candidate is the, you know, James Monroe, of course, this is the newer school. I don't know, where are we with the proposal, the bid, or whatever?
I sent everything over to Dave Blank from Ramon's office.
Yes.
And he's going through it, so I think he's going to be discussing it later.
Okay.
We're going to discuss it in closed session, our review of requests, proposals. I'm sorry, we're going to discuss it in closed session, our review of requests for proposals concerning solar panels on our buildings.
Yeah, but we're definitely, you know, looking into that. And as I said before, we're looking to save money on the cost and also be more, a little bit more green to, you know, for the environment.
Edison, I'm part of Edison PTSO. We're looking for volunteers and food donations for Project Graduation. Next Friday is graduation, we're all excited. We're looking for parents to volunteer, of course, and if there's anything that you could do, we appreciate it. We're going to be doing it at the rack after the graduation. Usually, we start about eight o'clock, everybody comes back to the high school. We give them a bag and the T-shirts, and we hold their cell phones. And then they go over to the rack for the last memorable time that they're all together. The point is, they're not on the roads driving.
Yes.
They're having a good time, and they usually stay there until three, four o'clock in the morning.
Where is it actually held, Project Graduation? It used to be College Avenue Gym.
At the Rack and Buckers.
Well...
With the gym, yeah.
Sunny Werble. Edison High is at Sunny Werble this year?
Yeah, where the, it's a big gym, and they have a DJ, and they...
JP Stevens had it there for years.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And they also have, I think, the pool, and then there's also tennis courts, and, yeah, it's huge. So, if any volunteers, we would be appreciative. Unfortunately, it couldn't be at the parent meeting tonight, but if you can get in contact with me, we'd be happy to help you.
So, what kind of food you're looking for?
Usually, we did it low-key, like, we did the hot dogs and hamburgers, nothing too extravagant. But we try to keep it up all night long with the, yeah, with the burners and everything, so, you know, it's available to everyone. And I don't know the exact figures yet, I haven't seen if we can cover the whole expense.
Just donate the money.
Yeah, unfortunately, this year, our membership was a little bit low. So, and we did a couple of different fundraisers, we had the craft fair, the craft fair was great. We had one indoors and one outdoors.
So, vendors, if you're hearing, you know?
Yes, vendors.
Yeah, help us, you know, you're working out, this should give it back to the community, we need you guys, all right?
My next thing is, there was fourteen parks currently under construction. I mentioned this before, there's no list exactly to say when the parks will be finished. I know that there's some residents that were a little concerned, because there wasn't any signs or anything to say it was being revamped, they're being, like, retooled, and new equipment is being put in. So, the township said they'll put that list out there, because some of the residents were a little concerned about parks being under construction. And then my last thing, if you can please look into the registration process for early August, I mean, late August. I know sometimes there's lines out the door for people who are trying to get their kids registered at last minute. If there's anything that you can do to make that process a little bit better and faster, we appreciate it.
Okay, so, just to reiterate, we have implemented an online registration system this year.
Does everybody know?
It was posted to the website, and I guess this is probably for kids who are new to the district, right?
Yes, there are a lot of people coming in on the summer time.
So, yeah, we'll ask, you know, yeah, Rich to double-check if it's on our website. And the process we talked about is, you can upload a lot of forms, you can fill the forms online. And once you have enough, you got the required forms, it will automatically check, say, hey, you have checked off, then you can come in for a meeting. And our enrollment staff, well, that's what I was told, tried to schedule a meeting with the parent. So, reduce the need to wait, and before everything's filled, right over here. So, something can be done ahead of time. And only maybe two or three, you know, papers needs to be manually checked, they'll bring in. So, we hope that will reduce the long lines waiting in the summer. And also, on top of that, we added is the verification system. There will be built-in this enrollment system to verify the kids who, you know, help us verify the kids who are not the residents, or who are, you know, who are cheating the district on this, yeah.
Yeah, also, if you can look at the same time for transportation, I know sometimes that could be difficult in the beginning of the school year with all the parents getting on board, which buses they're supposed to go to. Sometimes there's a problem, they call, or they have to come in to make sure that that is clarified.
Yeah, that's another thing that we were asking, is instead of mailing out the, you know, the bus passes, we look into allowing the parents to print it out, the bus passes, because they're part of the parent portal. So, we'll try to streamline some of the processes, you know, for this year. But let's see. But let's see, let's see. Hope, hope it will help. Okay? Yes, Carol?
Carol Budowski, thirty-nine Jonathan Drive. Um, first, great job, Dan. You were very speedy and very thorough.
Thank you. Sixty idols.
Yes.
I was gonna give a-
Sixty idols, just think it was speed-
I was gonna give a bottle of water.
Yeah, he probably could've used that. Um, I'd like to thank the Board of Ed for inviting the Edison community to complete a survey to begin the superintendent search process. Many people were disappointed by the superficial nature of the survey. And I've tried to explain to some people my impression that the survey was a first step. Letting people know about the process that has just begun and welcoming them to give input into the process, which is appropriate at this point. In response, I would like to share something I read on Facebook this morning. I'm not recommending or endorsing anyone for superintendent position. This was written by someone who I don't think is really in a position or interested in being selected as the Edison superintendent. It really impressed me though and gave me some idea of the kind of person I would like to see as superintendent of schools here in Edison. Just one aspect of the person we should be looking for. So this is what I read. This person wrote, "I knew eight years ago when I walked into blank school, that I had a special group of students, teachers, staff, and P T O." Last night proved my case further when our amazing P T O voted to donate over forty thousand dollars for the enhancement of our students, staff, and district. Over my eight years at blank, they have donated well over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Ranging from laptops for staff, Chromebooks for students, smart boards, wireless drops, window air conditioning units for every class, upgrade of our electrical panel, playground equipment, painting of our hallways, painting of games on our Black Talk for students during recess and at P E time, class trips every year for all grades, glass showcase for our art class, instruments and supplies for our music programs, monthly assemblies for our students, and many after-school activities for our students and parents. Last night, they donated an electronic sign for the outside of blank soccer and football, goals outside of the school. Soccer and football goals for our field. We'll work with our superintendent and Board of Ed to refurbish our baseball and softball field, bulletin boards, new P A systems for our gym, learning rugs for our staff, tables for our faculty room. I would like to thank all of my present and past presidents, board members, parents, teachers, staff, and a special thank you to my current president and executive board members, who shall remain nameless, as well as our two teacher reps, who shall also remain nameless, for all their continued hard work and support. Lastly, thank you to all of the parents who, that helped so much over my eight years here. I can't thank all of you enough, principal. And I know you didn't ask me for this input, but I'm giving you an example of a school administrator with a heart. A quality that at times can be every bit as important as the concrete tangible qualifications of the job. So when you sought opinions from the community members who felt that the survey didn't ask them enough and let them share enough, I thought I would share with you. I, this is, was something that really touched my heart and impressed me about the kind of person we should be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know which school you're talking about. Yeah, no, that's not embarrassing. That's, that's, that's really great. Um, yeah, we, we, we are starting the, uh, the search. Uh, the survey is to help us build up a profile, uh, for the superintendent. Uh, so, you know, um, we're, we're starting the process. And the other thing that, you know, um, for some of the P T Os and P T S Os in Edison, um, unfortunately, I, when I go to some of the meetings, the, I don't see a lot of participation. Um, I really like the parents to, to really get involved into the, uh, you know, children's education, your school activities. And this is a great example, although it's not in Edison, but we would like to see if we can, uh, you know, have the similar success in Edison. You know, talking about upgrading the, uh, electric panels, talking to Ralph right before the meeting. Um, we are actually asked, um, uh, Dan and our, um, facility manager Ken to look into the cost of, um, upgrading our, um, the panels for some of the schools, uh, looking at, uh, one of the schools in the south, one of the schools in the north. Uh, let's see how much cost it is. Um, 'cause the weather's gonna, um, hotter. I'm pretty sure we're gonna see some, uh, posting about, you know, the temperature in the classroom. Um, so we'll continue to look into that. You know, window units is an option, uh, but probably not the best, um, energy-efficient way to do it. Uh, so Ken told me that he's gonna wait for the, whether it's getting a little bit hotter, uh, to, to test the load about the, um, some of the schools. So we can get a better idea, uh, how much it's gonna cost us to upgrade those, uh, electrical panels. But, uh, we're working on it. And, uh, you know, I wish that we can do it faster, but, uh, we didn't forget all of those. Okay? Any other public comments? Yes?
Hi, I'm Timpul Mahocha, four-sixty Van Grove Avenue. Uh, I thank you board for constraining lowering the, um, bus payment. But I, um, you know, there's this thought that I, I thought I would probably talk it out loud and see where we are with this. I know the law, New Jersey state law, says that if you are within two miles or two-point-five miles, you're, you know, entitled for free busing. But, you know, I don't know how long that law has been written. Uh, but since then, you know, times have changed. Communities have shaped in a different way. A lot of overcrowded, uh, Edison is almost like overcrowded, there's overcrowded population here. With every old house, we're constructing two or three houses in the same place. So is there, I mean, you know, since I feel that, that we have taken that law as granted and then the needs of the subscription, uh, demand has been increasing just because, you know, the schools are overly crowded. It takes like for me, from my house, to drop my son to J P Stevens and to get out and come back and drop my elementary, um, nine-year-old son, uh, it, it takes me more than like thirty and thirty-five minutes. It's that bad. And I hardly meet him to dra- uh, to drop him at J P. And then it's almost eight-thirty by the time I come home to drop him back. So maybe, you know, maybe I wanna, you know, um, want us all to think, maybe the burden of the cost share, since the times have changed, the needs have changed, the demands have changed, um, you know, and the demand of, you know, two parents working and, uh, you know, things have changed now over the past. And I guess we could put all those into perspective and see if we can, um, distribute that, um, you know, the gap, um, not just on the subscription players, but also on the, on the free busing. I mean, it's ju- I mean, you know, something that, I mean, it, we definitely see that there's a change, there's a lot of change going on these days. And, and definitely, it could, it could maybe, you know, we could see some kind of solution from that, um, perspective that maybe everybody get to share some burden of the cost of the busing. So, you know, the, there are families with single home incomes, there are family with below-average, uh, capita in, within Edison, and there are families with more than one children. Um, so it's definitely, if you are not in the zone of two or three, uh, two or two-and-a-half miles, it's definitely gonna lay, I mean, you know, still put a heavy burden on the cost of the busing because school is a need, school is a must. And I think we should probably think in those lines and see if we could really convince everybody to, uh, pitch in a little bit, you know, because the demands are changing now. The, you know, everything is change, changing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else?
So Blake from Mitchell Circle. Again, want to second the thought. Dan, you did a good presentation. It's a very dry topic, but you did good.
Thank you.
Um, so the, again, on the transportation, so I think with the price hike, we got the information. But, uh, for some of the parents have already paid the fees of six fifty. So just wanted to understand if, uh, Monday, if you go through that fifty-dollar hike, how would, that would be taken care?
We just said we're gonna reimburse every parent.
Okay, so, um, that's, that's one of the questions. So the other point is, so, um, th- this is just a comment. So I think it was already touched upon. So, uh, in our community, that is, demand for a lot of subscription, uh, bus fee. So if we can collect the data, it will definitely help you to break even the cost that you are discussing. So there is a, a huge demand and the complainers, we are put in waiting list. And, uh, one of the information is you need to upfront pay it so that you will get the bus. So that's the talk, at least in our community. So if you collect the data, definitely it would break even. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. The point you touched, we, we already tried to cover with, with the group, so, you know. Anybody else? Okay. Seen on, uh, we'll go to the, uh, uh, closed session. Dan?
Okay. Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two-thirty-one, public laws of nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion from, of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the hearing specified, subject matters. Two, the general and later of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Uh, attorney, client, privileged discussion regarding student matters, litigation brought on by former employees, shared services agreements, superintendent contracts, solar project specifications, C L E O contract, township litigation, New Jersey School Board Association matters, E T A grievances, perk and unfair legal practices and personnel matters. Under personnel, we're gonna discuss the resignations and terminations, retirements, appointments, reappointments, leaves of absences, changes of status, exempt salaries, uh, lunch aids, substitute staff, E S L testing stipends, sports camps, uh, summer sports camps, summer literacy academy, extended school year, authorization to approve home instructors, and authorization for the superintendent to employ staff members. Three, it is anticipated at this time that the above stated such about, subject matters should be made pu- made public at such time as need for nondisclosure long, no longer exists. And four, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Can I have a motion? Okay. Uh, Ms. Erica, Mrs. Maroni?
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Erica?
Yes.
Mr. Sheik?
Yes.
Well, yes.
Uh, we don't expect to, uh, come back after the closed session, so see you guys on Monday.